I'd like to call to order this April 8th, 2024, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board. Thank you all for coming. Tonight, as you'll notice, we are missing our chairman, Mr. Cross, and our vice chair, Ms. Hurst. So we will need a motion on the floor to elect a chair for this meeting. Do I hear a motion for that?
In the absence of our current chair of the school board, Mr. Matt Cross, and without our current vice chair of the school board, Mrs. Sarah Hurst, and given the presence of a quorum at this meeting pursuant to our policy BCB, I move to elect Holly Cave to chair the meeting today.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say yes. Yes. All opposed, say no. Motion passes three oh. We have one board member wishing to join remotely to this meeting. Do we have you, Ms. Hurst? Can you hear me?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Can you share with us specifically why you're wanting to join remotely tonight to this meeting?
Sure, I'm in Pennsylvania on a family vacation.
So I need a motion on the floor to approve Mrs. Hurst remotely joining this meeting tonight. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Sarah Hurst's request to participate electronically in this April 8th, 2024, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board in which a quorum is physically present, given the reasons shared audibly by Ms. Hurst this evening.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion passes three oh. Welcome, Ms. Hurst.
Oh, actually, we didn't vote.
Oh, sorry. Do we not vote? I knew Jackie was gonna keep me in line tonight. Thank you, Ms. Lor. Okay, all approved, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. Now the motion passes three oh. Thank you. Ms. Lor keeps us in line. Okay, we now need to approve the agenda for tonight. Do I hear a motion on the floor to approve our agenda for April 8th, 2024?
I move, we approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes three oh.
Did we get the online vote? Ms. Hurst, can you hear us? Yes, I can hear you. I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear me at the same time that you are saying yes, but that's a yes for me. There's usually a little bit of a delay, so, okay. Sorry.
I'll wait for her.
It gets really hard, yeah.
Can we show that as a four oh, Ms. Gilkerson?
Is she too loud for you guys? Okay, can we turn her down, or should we have Sarah? Okay. Sarah, can you hold it away from your mouth, maybe?
Sure, I'm more than 12 inches, now I'm 18. Am I still too loud?
You are coming in loud and clear.
Super loud, okay. All right.
Okay, we good to go? Okay, now if we can all share in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Now, if all that are able to stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all for humoring us tonight. Okay, first we have a V S B A art presentation, and I believe Becky Ford is coming for that.
Good evening, Dr. Shiflett and board. Thank you for having me here tonight. It is my pleasure to present to you all the winners of the V S B A student art competition. And so first, I'd like to tell our audience a little bit about what that is. So our school board is part of the larger Virginia School Boards Association, which holds an annual contest for student art. So we start by having every art teacher in the county submit two to three pieces of artwork that is what they consider the best that has been done this year. We have a committee that does a blind vote. So we take off the names, we take off what school it came from, and then we have a committee vote on which ones are their favorites. From there, we come up with the first four placements for middle school, high school, and elementary school. The first place work will go on to the Regional School Board Association meeting. I believe Ms. Lor is taking those for us on April 18th. And if they win first place there, then they travel to Charlottesville and spend the entirety of next school year on display in the Virginia School Board Association offices. So we actually currently have two pieces of artwork there. From last year, our first place high school and first place middle school both won at the region. And so they will be coming back, and hopefully we will be sending more of our Rockingham County artwork there again. So I would like to call students up. This was voted on very recently, so some students had conflicts and were not able to come, but we do want to make sure that we honor them all by name and their teachers. So if the student is not here, then we'll ask their teacher to come up and accept it on our behalf. So beginning with elementary, we have our honorable mention, Robert Wyler, from Cub Run Elementary. Teacher is Courtney Spires. Robert, are you here? Ms. Spires. We have Nora Yates from Linville Edom Elementary School, and the teacher is Kelly Dove. Nora? In second place, oop. We've got Alemis Garcia from John C. Myers Elementary School, and the teacher is Janay Yoder Flores. May I just give you a hand? And our first place elementary school winner is Maisy McNally from John Wayland Elementary School. Teacher is Casey Swanzig. For middle school honorable mention is Aiden Foltz from J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, and taught by Sarah Beth Taylor. In third place, we have Leah Lupinachi from Montevideo Middle School, taught by Samantha Ritter. In second place, we've got Meredith Suter at Wilbur Pence Middle School, taught by Mimi Guido. And our first place winner for middle school is Kiri Bunia from Montevideo Middle School, taught by Sam Ritter. Moving into our high school pieces, I love that this has blown up for you, because if you saw out in the lobby, this is a very, very tiny intricate drawing. So an honorable mention, we've got Melady Segovia Delgado from East Rockingham High School, taught by Christopher Michael. In third place, Mackenzie Darby of East Rockingham High School, also taught by Christopher Michael. In second place, Sarah Aaron from Turner Ashby High School, taught by Erin Wetzel. And in first place for our high school division, Callie Mason from Broadway High School, taught by Martha Maddox. So I hope everybody gets a chance to see the artwork in the lobby as they are on their way in or out. And I'd like to ask all of our art teachers to stand and just be acknowledged for all the hard work that they do year in and year out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Thank you, too, to the teachers for taking your time out to be here for your students tonight. The fine arts are so important, and there's not a whole lot that leaves me speechless, but those drawings are amazing, so wow. Thank you all. All right, next on our agenda is highlights by board members. And Dr. Shiflett, I'm gonna give you the honor tonight to go first.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Cave. Excuse me. First, I had the opportunity to enjoy the MMS musical this past weekend, The Little Mermaid Jr., and it was an outstanding performance. Also, last week, I had the opportunity to join several other superintendents and the community members to, I was part of the DOE Listening Tour in regards to the Board of Education's New School Performance and Support Framework. At that meeting, Dr. Lisa Coons, the state superintendent, presented the draft of the new accreditation system that is being considered for Virginia. The new plan will measure mastery, growth, and readiness. I'm looking forward to seeing the final product that is slated to be approved this summer by the State Board of Education, and it will take full effect in the fall of 2025. Last, I would like to add a few clarifying comments about the budget. Hopefully, you received my message over the weekend about the budget, reassuring the families that students' mental health and behavior remain a priority for our school division. I have received some comments about some of the internal adjustments that we have made as we have tried to balance the budget and provide additional support for our E L and S P E D programs. Several individuals asked me about the additions of the school safety coordinator and the supervisors of A Ds, and I'd like to address these two positions in particular. In terms of the school safety coordinator, school safety has always been a priority for me. It was part of my first 100-day plan, and I actually spoke to school board members in the fall about the possibility of hiring that position during this current school year. If you may recall, the school board did approve a job description for this position at the February 12th meeting. This is not a negative reflection on Mr. Travis Weeks, who is our supervisor of transportation, who currently serves as our school safety coordinator. But I believe school safety is paramount, and we need a dedicated individual who has made a career in the field of safety and security. There are many aspects of this job. He or she will do more than school safety audits. I encourage folks to look at the job description and all facets that are involved. This individual will make sure we are providing the best measures of safety in all aspects of our day-to-day operations. By investing in this crucial position, we are taking proactive measures to ensure that our schools remain safe havens for teaching and learning. Also, I may add, with this position, along with the S R O positions, we are applying for state grants. Hopefully, we receive some of the grant funding, but we will not know about the grants until May or June, so they have to be part of the, they have to be part of our current budget. In terms of the supervisors, the supervisor of A Ds, perhaps we should have titled this as the Supervisor of Athletics. I should have recognized this sooner. For example, Becky Ford, who is here this evening, she is the supervisor of fine arts, not the supervisor of fine arts teachers. She oversees the entire program. Principals supervise the teachers. It is true, this individual will be working with our four athletic directors, but this role is more than supervising these individuals. It is overseeing the entire athletic program. We have over 30 JV and varsity sports teams in each of our high schools. That's over 120 teams. It is providing leadership for our entire school division to work towards excellence in extracurricular activities and to build consistency among our schools. This will ensure that everyone is on the same page and working towards common goals. They will also work with the Virginia High School League to ensure that all programs are compliant and to assist me with matters of eligibility. With a dedicated supervisor in place, we can focus on long-term strategic planning for athletic programs. They will also have to work closely with our maintenance department to ensure that all our facilities are functional and build a plan for ongoing upgrades. As well, they will provide professional development for our coaches and athletic staff. I realize that our primary goal is teaching and learning in the classroom, but our students learn lots of life lessons from participating in extracurricular activities such as sports. Students learn about teamwork, leadership, sportsmanship, discipline, resilience, and the benefits of working hard. Having a supervisor of athletics will allow us to enhance and improve our current programs, which will be a huge benefit to our students. Finally, we plan to make adjustments internally, so the sticker price that folks are sharing on social media about the cost of this will not be that high. It will be significantly lower to our school division, probably at the cost of about $25,000 per year, not $142,000. So I wanted to just bring some clarity to some questions. People sometimes aren't always part of our conversations, and so they miss out on key pieces of what we're trying to accomplish. And again, I just wanted to reiterate that the area of school safety is a priority for not just this board, but this school division, for me as a superintendent, and also to think about building more consistency and greater commonality among our athletic programs across all four high schools and middle schools. Thank you, Mrs. Cave.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. I, too, was able to attend the Montevideo Middle School musical, and that was awesome. I enjoyed it so much, I was singing musical songs on the, all the way home and realized, wow, those kids are way, way, way more talented than I am, and so many of them. And it was also, I definitely noticed how the, the directors incorporated kids that really maybe weren't comfortable speaking or having a visual part, but they were rocks. I mean, some of our kids were rocks in the musical, and that's a pretty cool way to get kids on stage and get them maybe a little bit out of their comfort zone without pushing them out of their comfort zone or discouraging them. So I thought that was a really cool thing that they did. And if you haven't seen a musical, I am sad for you, but there's one more chance. This weekend, Elkton Middle School is, what are, what's their, does anybody know what their performance is?
Annie Junior.
Annie Junior, oh, that'll be, that'll be great. I believe Hilliard did Annie Junior a couple years back, and it is, it's a good one to see. So if you haven't seen a musical yet, you can watch Annie Junior at Elkton this weekend, and I highly recommend that. Definitely will be a highlight of my week. Last week, one of my highlights of the week was we got to do Farm to School Day at Folks Run Elementary School, and that was super exciting. We had sheep and tractors and cows and alpacas and a helicopter. And the helicopter was a really cool thing to see. I'm not sure how it was related to Ag, but it was there. And it was really neat to see the horse not even care that it took off, but all the adults go as it, as it took flight and then bobbled just a little bit and then took off over the trees. It was really exciting to see. But I actually scooted out of there real quick and went to the high school where I was able to address the Young Leaders Conference, which is a really proactive thing that I think our, our schools are doing. They're getting together fifth graders from all of the feeder schools. So Broadway has five feeder schools. So they brought fifth graders from each of those schools and let them have the day to work on team building and getting to know each other. And these kids will now be leaders when they go to middle school next year. And the idea is to help all of the students kind of acclimate to, to middle school and to all feel like they have a sense of belonging and to help each other. So I thought that was a really super cool idea, and I was excited to be a part of that. Of course, I completed bus driver training, but I still have to take my test. And Mr. Sowers, if you could remind me to do that, that would be super helpful. But the bus driver's training was very enlightening. And folks, thank your bus driver tomorrow, because one thing that really stuck out with me, there was a lot of really, really good training in bus driver training, but one thing, the most vulnerable position you can put yourself in is in front of other people with your back facing them, which is what we ask our bus drivers to do every single day. So definitely hats off to our bus drivers, and that was a very, very well-done and very interesting experience for me. So thank you, Mr. Sowers, and the rest of your team for, for doing that for us. And, oh, that's all I have. So thank you very much.
That was enough. It's two weeks in the life of a school member, very busy, but that's, that's great. Ms. Burgoyne?
So obviously, we had spring break, so that was a lot of fun. I got to hang out with my kids and do a lot of school board things and talk to these people often, but it was a good, it was a good, nice week of not having to make school lunch at seven. So that was very appreciated. But my highlight was we all got to go and have lunch at Rockingham Academy, and that was, every board member came, and Dr. Shiflett. And I just want to say, like, Mrs. Dean is such an awesome person, and the students are so lucky to have her. I feel like, you know, I don't know her very well, and I've talked to her a couple times, but I feel like if I called her in an emergency, she'd be like, yeah, I'm right there. She is so passionate about her kids and supportive, and they're so lucky to have her. And the kids were so awesome. They made us lunch, and they made us these really awesome charcuterie boards, which were really, really cool, very talented, the, the way they crafted them and everything. There was a couple different styles, and I was just very, very impressed. So that was a lot of fun, and it was, it was nice to get together with the board and not talk about school board things, to talk about life and kids and just vacations and stuff like that. So that was, that was my highlight.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Ms. Hurst, do you have something you want to share tonight or highlights?
Sure. Am I quieter now, or am I too loud?
Still pretty loud.
Oh, I could almost whisper.
Is that, that good right there, folks?
Yeah. I don't want anybody cringing, because their ears are hurting. I just want to highlight, there's an upcoming training that the Rockingham County Public School Special Education Advisory Committee is hosting. It's a virtual training that's this Thursday, April 11th, from 7:00 to 8:00. If you have a child in child study, or you have a child that has an I E P or a 504, this is for you. It's a training called Your Voice Matters: It's Key to the Process of Empowering Families to Engage. And family, I just want to highlight that family engagement really is essential to the success of the child. Every time involved parents, their, their kids are succeeding in school. And so this is specifically to help share how you can get engaged and effective approaches to advocating for your child that, you know, your children that might have special needs. And so the description shares that practical tips and techniques that can be used right away to sustain strong collaborative relationships with your child's school will be shared. If you need any more information about this, please let me know, reach out to me, and I'll get you in touch with Amber Hamm, who is our fabulous Special Education Advisory Committee Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. I also wanted to highlight tonight our trip to Rockingham Academy. I just wanted to say thank you to all the students there that prepared all the food. Everything was delicious. They really are teaching those kids there some life skills, and we just, we got to see some interesting things. Ms. Burgoyne and I took a tour of Rockingham Academy after we ate, and it was just something to see the things that they do there. And I echo Ms. Burgoyne's sentiments about Ms. Dean. She is amazing. I would almost, I would say that there is none like her, and so our division is really blessed to have someone like her leading over there. So thank you, Ms. Dean, for that. And also, I forgot, I wanted to bring my charcuterie board tonight, because I wanted to show it off. I've left it on my counter all week long and just went right out the door without it. So, but the students made that, you know, they handmade them, and what do you call it when they burn the? Brandon, yeah. They branded it themselves. It says Rockingham Academy, and it's got the phoenix on it, which is their mascot. So it was just, it was really awesome, and it meant a lot to me. I also wanted to say I attended the Forbes Center Field Trip last Friday, and that went really well. And just hearing the kids laugh when the one JMU student did the worm was priceless. It was so good. It's so good to hear kids laugh. So thank you, Ms. Ford, for taking care of that and setting it all up and giving our kids the opportunity to do those things. And that is all that I have for tonight, as far as highlights as well. So we will move on to our action items. Tonight, we need to approve the minutes for our last meeting, March 25th. Do I hear a motion on the floor to approve those?
I move, we approve the minutes of the March 25th meeting as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes? Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes four zero. And next up, we have bills and mileage. Dr. Shiflett?
Yes, you have in your pocket the bills and mileage for March, for March 2024, and I do recommend that you approve paying the bills and mileage.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a move?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the March 2024 bills as presented.
And do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
All those opposed, say no? Motion passes four zero. Next up, we have field trips. Dr. Shiflett?
Board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Broadway High School, FFA Ecology, April 26 through 28, eight students to Virginia Beach. Allstate Choir and Band, April 18 through 20th, six students, Richmond. TSA State Competition, May 2nd through 5th, 24 students, Hampton. Montevideo Middle School, TSA State Competition, May 2nd through 5th, eight students, Hampton. Spotswood High School, FCC LA State Leadership Conference, April 11th through 14th, six students, Virginia Beach. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation on field trips, so I have a motion on the floor to approve them.
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
All those opposed, say no? Motion passes four oh. Okay, and that's it for our action items for tonight, moving on to information items. First up, we have Dr. Melissa Bentley with the Annual R C P S Special Education Plan and application for federal funds.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Shiflett. I'm so excited tonight to share with you the Annual Special Education Plan. This is an annual event. The 2024-25 Special Education Annual Plan serves as a formal agreement between our school board and the Virginia Department of Education, and it's for implementing federal and state laws and regulations governing the services for students with disabilities. Accordingly, the dispersment of state and federal funds that are appropriated for special education, children with disabilities, is contingent upon board approval. So that is due on May the 10th, so I will be back in two weeks after you've had a chance to review this document, seeking your approval for the plan. But what I would like to do tonight is just briefly But what I would like to do tonight is just briefly go through the structure of the plan so that you're better prepared. Page two of the plan says that these are the following required components. We must have superintendent's certification. Page two and three of the document outlines all of the policy statements and the statements of assurances that are required in the plan. And these basically are our assurances that we are meeting the letter of the law for IDEA and state regulations. There's also a part on page three where we, or page four, where we have to talk about the implementation of the 2022-2023 Special Education Plan. And that is very common because federal reports always lag two years. So everything that we're doing this year in our plan will be reported on in two, two years from now for federal accountability. Prior to the submission to VDOE, May 10th, every school division has to review its annual plan with the local Special Education Advisory Council. And so that happened with IRCEAC on March 14th. Also, there's a place in here about the maintenance of effort. And so that's just a few narratives. We are required by law to at least maintain or exceed our effort towards students with disabilities. And we have met that criteria that was due earlier this school year. There's also a section for coordinated early intervention services and proportionate set aside. And proportionate set aside, IDEA requires that every school division spend a proportionate amount of its federal flow-through dollars on special education students who are unilaterally placed in private schools or are homeschooled in Rockingham. Children who are homeschooled by their parents are treated in the same manner as children placed in private or parochial schools. And so the set aside fund amount equals to around $2,000 per family for the year. And those set aside funds will be utilized for special education-related services as outlined in their individual service plan, which is like a mini version of an IEP. The application also includes federal funds for Section 611 and 619. 619 is a grant specifically for pre-K students, whereas 611 is for school-age students, but can also be used for expenditures towards pre-K if needed. And then the last page of the plan actually has our budget in there. So it has federal, state, and local budget with a grand total of around $18,650,000. We outline our initiatives on that last page, which is collaboration with the Shenandoah Valley Regional Program, the Spire and Ispire Reading Program, which is our Tier Three Intervention Program that supports letters in the science of reading and all the other curriculum that we have in general education. We have a curriculum called the Autism Helper Curriculum, Blueprint, Preschool Curriculum. And then we are continuing to work on improving our inclusive practices for preschoolers. We are working on high leverage practices in special education, concussion management procedures. We're still using the Virginia IEP system and the MANT system for safety crisis intervention. And then lastly, it has all of our staffing and personnel needs for the year. So like I said, I will be back in two weeks for any questions that you may have, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have tonight as well.
Could you explain the MANT system to us a little bit? I think that's pretty interesting.
Yes, we've been using MANT for several years. And so it's a national program that we train all of our, what we call our adapted curriculum, teachers, teacher assistants, several of our principals. And we have trained the trainers in our division. And so they are, they offer two full days of training where folks are taught, number, number one, the first three chapters of MANT are on relationships. And so building appropriate relationships in the classroom to try to prevent any kind of behavior that needs to be deescalated. And then the last day of training is how to safely intervene with a student in an unsafe situation.
That, I think that's a really great program. So thank you for doing that. How many of our employees take the MANT training and who kind of takes that training?
Our supervisors in in our department sort of keep a list of who is trained, and then they have to be recertified every few years. And so we have over 100 folks that are trained. This year, we just wrote a grant in February, and we were approved for VDOE to try to train additional folks. So we've partnered with the Shenandoah Valley Regional Program, and there'll be additional training the week after school lets out. And we're going to try to, it would be really nice if we could have enough trainers, that we had two or three trainers per attendance area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hurst, did you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Mrs. Carrie Gray, the CTE Perkins Local Plan.
Good evening, board. Dr. Shiflett, it must be federal plan night. So I bring to you the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act. You will hear me refer to it as Perkins. It was originally the Carl Perkins funding for career and technical education. And under reauthorization, it was renamed. So this is our RCPS Local Perkins Plan for next year. You have the full executive summary in your board docs, and those first several pages are the assurances that we're complying with all federal rules and guidelines in order to receive the money. And the act is a federal act to provide funding for career and technical education, secondary and post-secondary. Obviously, we're focused on the secondary programs here at this level. And the funding priorities for Rockingham County Public Schools for 2024-25, we're going to focus on teacher professional development locally and sending teachers to professional conferences, sometimes with, in conjunction with them taking students to their state and national conference. They have professional development opportunities as well. And we're going to focus on skills that teachers need to be able to teach their students so that they're staying current with what business and industry tells us that they need from our students, which will be their employees. And also teaching essential skills and vocabulary to our EL students and assisting teachers and making sure that they're reaching all of our special populations. We're going to focus on updating and replacing equipment in our labs and, as always, program innovation, moving our programs forward to meet the needs of the community. So we have, like, schools have their report card every year. CTE programs in each division get their performance assessment for the previous year. We're meeting standards in graduation rate, work-based learning, and academic performance in language arts, science, and math. So our standards are actually tied to the division's standards as far as graduation rates and academic performance. So our role is to support those, get our students ready for the future, but also make sure that they're meeting their academic standards. We have special populations, which can include our special education students, students with 504s, students identified with language needs, EL students, and non-traditional students. And non-traditional students are represented, the gender that's represented 25% or less of a specific career. And so then that gender is identified by VDOE as non-traditional in that area. So where we do need some work is that we're not meeting the special population standards in science. But as you know, we are looking for property for an agricultural land lab that would support hands-on science learning opportunities. And I really think that would help us in that area. And then students taking programs that are non-traditional according to the VDOE. So recruitment and retention in those areas. Our strengths in our program, every two years, we have to do a comprehensive local needs assessment. So we've worked with our partners on our advisory councils and committees, individual program committees. We've talked to students, we've talked to teachers. And our strengths in CTE in Rockingham County are enrollment. We've increased our enrollment over 800 unduplicated students, meaning if they're taking two CTE classes, they're not counting twice from last year. And innovation, we continue to, to propose and teach innovative courses and programs. And our CPS and our work-based learning is a model program for this state and one that a lot of divisions look to duplicate. Areas for improvement, we talked about the special populations and non-traditional students in those areas. We'll be looking to do some increased and intentional recruiting to make sure that our programs are representative of the student populations that you see in the schools. And then aligning instruction with industry needs, focusing on teacher professional development to do that, working with business and industry in our advisory groups. And we do completer surveys, which is contacting students that graduated the previous year to see what they're doing and if they're working in the CTE area that they studied in school. And so this is the RCPS Perkins budget for next year. We don't have our actual entitlement or allocation that we'll get for '24, '25. So we base it off of the allocation that we got this year. And then when we get the actual allocation, we make amendments to meet the total budget line that we will get from this state. And you have the more detailed version in your board docs, so you can let me know if you have any questions there. And then MTC's plan is also part of your executive summary in your board docs. You'll notice that we allocate, we'll allocate a little over $44,000, excuse me, $44,000 to MTC for them to use for equipment, professional development, their three line items there. And then Harrisburg City Schools contributes the remainder of that. So as a regional program, they get Perkins money from both divisions. And then I will also return on April 27th to ask for your approval of the plan for next school year. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Ms. Hurst, do you have any questions for Ms. Gray?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have an update on the supplemental materials policy, and I will turn that over to Ms. Hurst.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. I just want to share another update about the library materials policy. We've taken a look at the feedback from the survey, and we've consulted with our new attorney. And we've made enough updates to the policy that we thought it would be best to leave it as an informational item for tonight. We also got some emails asking us why we haven't had more meetings for input. And one of the reasons we opted to use a survey to collect the feedback was because we felt it would be the best way to efficiently collect that feedback from a variety, from a variety of sources. And so the survey was open-ended. It left room for people to share their thoughts. You didn't have to just mark agree or disagree or to what, what degree you did like parts of the draft. We just left it open-ended. And if we had had, we felt like if we had had a series of public forums for that, we would have had hours just wrapped up in comments. And just for comparison here, we had about 350 people fill out the survey, which I thought was great. I was really pleased with that. But if each of those had come to a meeting and spent three minutes, we would have had well over 15 hours worth of public comments just on the, on the drafts. And so, and I know that Ms. Cave and I have at least that, that amount of time just in reviewing the responses, the survey responses. So we felt like, at the time, setting up a survey was probably the most efficient way to get that feedback. And so I hope that, I'm very appreciative of all the people that took the time to complete the survey and let us know our, let us know your thoughts. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cave to kind of highlight a few of those changes. But I would encourage all board members to take the time to review the policies, reach out and let, let us know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. A lot of what I was going to say, she said, but I just wanted to tag on to what she was talking about. I know it may seem to you, sometimes the things that you can't see is harder to understand. And so I think the community feels like by submitting their thoughts on a survey that we didn't hear you. And I actually feel the complete opposite with that because we were able to read over the same comments over and over again. Or, you know, when we were meeting with legal counsel, we could say, what did that specific person say? And we were able to pull it up and look quickly and work it into policy. And if we had done that through public comment and it was videoed, we would be going into the feed and trying to fast forward and rewind. And it just would have been really not productive. And so I know, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Hurst, but we reviewed these comments, every single one we read. And that's just, you know, me giving my word to you that we definitely heard you. And really, we, we only have our words between each other. And so, and I used to say when I was younger, they, they said that phrase, word is bond, but it really is. And so you're only good as what, as what your word is. So we worked really hard. We went, I think, just a couple of things that we did. We started looking at all the different pots that we had for filing complaints about, you know, sexually explicit content, objectionable material, objectionable material or sexually explicit in curriculum. So we ended up with like three pots, and it just seemed like so much. And we don't want it to be so much, not for staff, not for review committees, not for teachers, and not for parents. So we ended up, if you've read the drafts that we put up today, we kind of went down into two pots. So we have a complaint for sexually explicit material, and we have a complaint form for basically anything other than that. And I felt like that simplified it in some way for all of us. We did repeatedly throughout this process, we heard people say that they, I don't want to say people, teachers and staff say that they like the tiered system. So we did create that. We do have that. So we have a, you know, a school-level committee, we have a division-level committee, depending on what the complaint is. So we did stay with those tiered level, levels of complaints so that we can handle those. And, and I think that will be really good. And I, we, we looked at everything from the really big issues to the really small issues. And one of the small issues being, you know, I think one of our policies had the word film strips in it. And they were like, who has film strips? So we changed that to say films. And then the really, really big issue was that teachers felt like they were going to have to catalog everything. So, and I'll touch on that in just a second. But I just wanted to point out the film strips thing because we went from everything that was very tiny, that really didn't have anything to do with why this whole thing got brought up in the first place to all the really, really important things to teachers. And so even from the beginning of the process, we never, ever wanted any of this to be an extra burden on our teachers. And I will say and give credit to Ms. Hurst, but she is a great advocate for our teachers. And so she was able, you know, to get into the mind of a teacher and what they think about when they think about having to catalog all their supplementary materials in their classroom. And so from the beginning, we never, ever intended for you to have to log every math you brought into your classroom or every magazine or, you know, every news article or anything like that. We were specifically looking at books. And so we have really edited and tried to pinpoint that language down so that you understand that you don't have to do that. And I think the big deal would be like in elementary school classrooms where they bring all kinds of stuff and all kinds of phonics books and, you know, all of those things. And we don't want you to have to catalog all of that. So we tried, that was never our intention in the first place. But maybe the language was such that that's the way that it seemed like. So hopefully, hopefully, we rectified that situation or that problem. We also took a couple of policies and just made sure that they were all lined up together so that any new policies work with policies that we already had in place. So I think that's all I have to say about that. Did I trigger anything in your memory, Ms. Hurst, before I move on?
I think, I think we also wanted to make sure we had protections in place for classic texts and that we weren't getting carried away with the, the definition of sexually explicit content to, to mean the Virginia flag. That, that in no way, we were, we're not looking to ban the Virginia flag. And so we, we wanted to make sure there were protections in place for classic texts and things like Shakespeare. things like Shakespeare, art classes, advanced art classes, or advanced literature classes like our AP English and things like that. They certainly have curriculum, and in no way were we looking to get into that piece. And so I feel like we kind of cleaned up the language there. And then we also added a protection for religious texts, any religious texts. And so I think that would be all I have to add as far as major changes.
Thank you. Ms. Hurst, I did have that on my list too, and I forgot to add it. Thank you very much because I think that's important for the community to know. Board members, you have in your packets a financial review you're going to look at. And then the last thing on our agenda tonight is comments from the public. We just have a few tonight, but I would ask everyone to remember our Character Counts rules as you come up and you speak to the board. And as a reminder, as always, at 30 seconds, the speaker will hear a bell sound, and when the time is up, the speaker will hear three beeps. So first on our list for tonight is Heather Harris.
Good evening. My name is Heather Harris. I'm a lifetime resident and current teacher in Rockingham County. Maya Angelou said, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. To be honest, I'm not sure who you are because you've shown so many different sides. You've praised yourself on listening to teachers and changing PLC days to workdays, yet you've also stated that you take teachers' concerns with a grain of salt, which isn't. You've sent out a sort of call to arms, asking that teachers be reported directly to you for breaking policy against political speech. However, comments made in this forum and online reflect personal political beliefs of board members. I've gone through the manuals, and while there is a policy stating employees need to remain neutral in politics, I was unable to find a policy for board members. Shouldn't board members follow the same nonpartisan policy? Also, in reviewing the last several months of public meetings, work sessions, online posts, I've noticed that comments, concerns, and feedback are only welcomed so long as they don't challenge, but fully agree without question. Of course, there's been a bit of lip service about wanting to work together, but when questions are asked, they're shut down and told, we are not going there. Prior to these comments, and I was glad to be the first one up here to speak, but prior to these comments, you reminded us of our Character Counts pillars, one of which is respect. As a veteran teacher, a master teacher, a parent, and a constituent of Rockingham County, I don't feel respected. I'm not arguing against policies or any decision that this board has made with or without a vote. Rather, my concern lies with your tactics. We can disagree and still be respectful. We can disagree and still have a conversation. I invite each board member to reach out to the schools and their districts and have a conversation in person with that school's employees. Listen to them, be open to questions, hear their concerns, and rejoice with them when they celebrate. But do it in person, not through digital means, where posters and comments can be as mean as they want. Because when you use this tactic, you are putting county employees and students in the crossfires of angry mobs that hide behind a keyboard. You are much akin to Nero playing while Rome burned. I'll leave you with this. I believe at the end of the day, we all want the same thing: happy, healthy, safe, engaged, and uplifted students. In order to achieve this, RCPS employees deserve the same.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Up next? Thank you. Up next, Lois Paul.
Board members, I'd like to thank you all for your hard work, your time, your talents, and your dedication to building a better community and a better school system. Thank you for being pro-choice. Pro-choice, in this case, means giving the parents a voice in what their, what books their children are able to read and what they're being exposed to in the library. I see this as like when you go to the grocery store. You don't put your cart down the aisle, and you don't put everything that's on the shelf in your cart. You can't do that. You pick what's right for your family. You pick those items that you know that you will use, that are, that will be not detrimental to your family, but will build your family up. Just because it's on the shelf doesn't mean it needs to go in your cart. And you have the freedom to choose what will be going into that cart. And thank you also for standing up to the relentless derogatory attacks that you've had to endure since you came on the board. The voters spoke at the election, and the voters, and the board is doing what the voters elected them to do. Destructive rhetoric doesn't serve any productive or enriching purpose. This is like trying to make sugar cookies sweeter by adding salt. Doesn't work. The salt is ruined, wasted, and the batch is just thrown out. Opposers demand tolerance, but they're the first ones to demean, and to demean those that they don't agree with. Open, civil dialogue better serves all. The board is too, could be commended for doing their level best to carry on despite these challenges. Thank you again, and God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Up next is Tina Suter.
My name is Tina Suter, and my three children attend South River Elementary, Elkton Middle, and East Rock High School. I'm also a kindergarten assistant this year at South River Elementary, and I'm much more comfortable speaking in front of kindergarteners, so excuse me for being nervous. But I want to acknowledge what a difficult position you as a board have been in to have to navigate a significant budget cut in the coming school year. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. As a parent, as well as someone who's in the classroom daily, I'd also like to voice my concerns about the cuts that you've chosen to make in the areas of behavioral support and technology. I've seen firsthand this year the importance of our school's BSA. She has been consistently involved in our classroom, and she's brought her own set of specialized skills that the lead teacher and I, as the instructional assistant, we haven't been trained in. Having our BSA available when needed allows the teacher and I to focus more of our attention on the other 18 kindergarteners who are ready to learn in that moment, rather than spending an unfair amount of time focused on the challenging behaviors of one student who may be struggling at the time. As a parent, I am grateful for the work our BSA does in my own child's classroom because I can see how it benefits the children who need her services. It benefits my child's teacher, and in turn, it benefits my child's learning process, and that maximizes the learning time for the majority of the students in the classroom. I'd also like to acknowledge the important skills of our technology assistant, who we've called to our classroom multiple times throughout the year to help us fix problems with our smart panel, with the student tablets, and with our document camera. Having her expertise available to us allows lessons to move forward smoothly, rather than the teacher and I spending a large amount of time troubleshooting technology that we're not as adept at. I understand the reality that not every position can be funded at this time. Please consider that these BSA and tech positions have been vital to our teachers on a day-to-day basis, and they have deep concerns about how their classrooms will function moving forward without these important services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suter. Okay, that was our last public speaker for the night. The next item on our agenda is board questions and comments, and I will start with you first, Ms. Hurst, if that's okay?
Sure. Thank you for allowing me to join virtually. I don't have any other questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Burgoyne?
I just wanted to say congratulations again to all the students here and the art teachers who work so hard. I remember at the end of last year, my daughter brought home this huge packet of art, and it was amazing. I don't think her art teacher is here tonight, but it was awesome. And I was going through all this art, and I was like, wow, I'm shocked and amazed and impressed by your skills and just these ideas that her art teacher kind of put out there and she ran with. So congratulations to you guys. Your art is beautiful, and to your art teachers for working so hard and kind of sparking that idea in your head and you guys taking it and running with it. So thank you, guys, and congratulations again. And thanks for sitting here through all this, so.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Ms. Lor?
Do we have any students with us tonight? I know some of you guys are here. It's good to see you. Thank you for coming. Some of you probably have some papers that need to be signed, yes? Well, you guys picked a great meeting to come to because it's like 8 o'clock and we're just about done, which is amazing. So I just want to say thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. And again, I want to echo, amazing job on the art, so great job. And I'm excited to take those to the contest coming up next week. And good luck to all of our students there, and thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Dr. Shiflett?
Yes, I'll make three quick comments first. Congratulations again to our winners this evening. You have a gift and a talent that I do not possess, and I am somewhat envious of you. Second thing I need to clarify in my clarifying statement, the $142,000 was something that was in our detailed budget. It was nothing that I presented to the school board or the board of supervisors. And again, that was a salary of payment plus benefits. And one of the things that Mr. Mories has done this year with us in budgeting is he uses real numbers. So sometimes you see a figure, what is that? Well, that's salary plus benefits. So that's where that money or that dollar amount, I think, is circulating, maybe through social media. But again, because we made internal adjustments, the price to our school division wasn't $142,000, it was, I think, under $25,000. And then the last comment I need to make is I see in this building tonight two mentors of mine, and as always, it's so, so great to see them and supporting Rockingham County Public Schools, even though they're retired and doing other things. So thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. And I will just say, Ms. Ford, is Annie Junior the last play for this year? Yeah, and I just want to say I'm very excited about being there this weekend. I was at our Little League Ball Pictures one Saturday morning, I think it was, and they were there practicing, so I got to sit in on the practice for a little bit, and it was so exciting. I'm very excited to see it. So thank you for your hard work with all of that. It's a lot this season. And so that is all I have. We do have reason to go into closed meeting. Do I have a motion to do that?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation; and A2, one or more particular students specifically related to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record containing a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Quick discussion, I'm sorry. Will Ms. Hurst be joining us, or is she gonna pop out now? Because I don't know how we're going to do this. I mean, there are ways, but...
Yeah, I think, I think I'm gonna pop out.
Okay, so thank you for joining us, Ms. Hurst. But I also wanted it clear for the room that Ms. Hurst will be having safe travels home now while we go into closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Okay, so motion passes for... Oh, we are now in closed meeting. Thank you.